Johnny, when we get to the point of doing some question and answer, can you keep an eye on the questions that are coming up? I geared most of this presentation tonight towards questions that have already come in, so there's going to be some follow-ups or questions that are coming in. If you can just keep your eye on that chat bar, I'd appreciate it. We're gonna start this in just a couple of minutes. I got that, James. And yes, Johnny, we'll answer them in person. Got about one minute before we'll get this thing going. Drew, I don't know how many people we have on here. We're gonna start this on time, so as soon as we hit about six, right at six o'clock, I'm gonna get this thing going.
Twenty-two. Twenty-four. Twenty-six. Sorry.
Are you giving me a countdown?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I am looking at six o'clock on my watch at this point right now, so we're gonna get this thing going. Thank you all for being here. Again, welcome to our second community town hall question and answer session for Silverton High School's twenty, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. I'm Wade Lockett. James Rise and Johnny Pharoah are both on here as well. They'll be helping us through some of the content and answering some of the questions. Want to remind everybody that we are learning more every single day. In fact, some of the newest information has just come to light, really within the last hour even, relative to online schools and understandings that we have for what the implications for our online school are. Want to remind everybody that everything that we see right now, I mean, everything that we're presenting to you at this point is is based on the best information that we have at this point in time. It is all subject and subject to change based on any new information that we might get in the, you know, the next twenty-four hours, the next week, what have you, which is why we're trying to hold these weekly updates to make sure that we can give people the most accurate information that we have as quickly as we as we have that information. All of this stuff is is in draft form, really until we we hit go. And once that happens, there's going to be some trial and error, and there's probably going to be some changes at that point as well. The presentation tonight is geared really towards questions that we had gotten previous to to right now. So I want to make sure that those questions are as many of those questions as possible are answered in the presentation. Then the the last few slides are some questions that aren't necessarily answered in the presentation, but have come in and we will answer those as well. So with that, you know, hopefully last week during our our town hall presentation, we had an opportunity to see what the school year looks like, kind of the format of the school year, the Fox hybrid versus the Hawks, the Fox online, how we have formatted some of that. Some of the bigger changes that you're going to see tonight are that have evolved over the last week and will be reflected in some changes that you'll see tonight are going to be in our our proposed schedule, daily schedule, weekly schedule for our students. And then certainly some some questions relative to the online school that you'll see towards the end of this that you know, are going to have a relatively urgent impact for for some folks. So let's just get into this right now. The overview for tonight, and this again, based on the majority of the questions that we received prior to the presentation this evening, is going to be our our registration plan. We're going to go through a block schedule versus a traditional seven-period schedule, what those look like, the pros and cons, the good and the bad, and kind of what that what that means. We'll give you an updated draft schedule of for a week and kind of what a week will look like for students. We will discuss a little bit about our our SEL, our social emotional curriculum, and then activities and athletics update. That's also going to have some implications with our online school. And then we'll post the questions that have been asked that haven't been answered in this presentation and then take whatever questions you've got at this point right now. This should go a little bit as far as the the presentation, the initial presentation, presentation. I should go a little bit quicker than it did last week, but leave us a little bit more time for questions and answers towards the end of all of this. So so our registration plan, we will begin registration next week. It will be a drive-through style registration. You should have already gotten something in the mail that is relative to the paperwork that that is typically filled out during registration. There will be four stations as you come through. We're asking cars to enter from Pine Street using Creminga, so they'll come through that direction, drive right across the the front of the school. There will be four stations that will be set up to drop off paperwork, to pick up schedules, to get a picture taken. And and then cars will exit out a Western Avenue. The dates for this will be Tuesday, the twenty-fifth through Friday, the twenty-eighth. From one to seven PM on each of those days, we would ask that you come in whenever it's convenient for you at those time, between those times. On Tuesday, we have that reserved for seniors. Wednesday reserved, Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, reserved for juniors. Thursday, August twenty-seventh, reserved for sophomores. Friday, August twenty-eighth, reserved for freshmen. If you have multiple students at Silverton High School that are in different grades, we would just ask, come whatever day is convenient for you, based on one of one of your students. And you can register all of your students on that particular day. For more information, and there is more information relative to registration, please feel free to go to our website. We're going to send this out via Parent Square either later on tonight or early tomorrow morning, as far as the the presentation is concerned. There is a link to it right there, or you can just go to our website and find out more information on our registration there. So that's that. Questions relative to the traditional seven-period versus the block schedule. There were a lot of questions revolving around what does it look like to take a year-long class and condense it down into eighteen-week class or an eighteen-week class and condense it down to a nine-week class? So we kind of gave a little side-by-side comparison, what a traditional seven-period day looks like versus a traditional block schedule looks like, or I'm sorry, a block schedule looks like. In a traditional seven-period day, we have forty-eight-minute periods here at Silverton High School. We have seven classes each day, plus AG, which creates a lot of transitions for our students. Our classes are scheduled by semester or by year, just depending on the length of the course. We award credits at semester. It's point-five credits per class per semester, or one credit per class per year, just depending on whether it's a semester-long course or a year-long course. The good of that is that there is continuity of some subject, some subjects for an entire year. It's very familiar to our students, to our families. And it keeps students moving throughout the day that sometimes might have trouble focusing for a full, you know, eighty or ninety-minute period of time. The drawbacks to it, that's a lot of classes for students to manage in any particular day or any particular semester. There are a lot of transitions, and it's difficult to engage deeply with the material or sometimes complete lab work in a forty-eight-minute period class where there's a warm-up, there's an ending activity. Teachers are taking attendance during that time. So it's difficult sometimes to really be able to focus in and engage and engage deeply with the material. With a block schedule, we would increase our our class times on a daily basis to eighty-five minutes per day. Students would only have four classes per day to manage. The classes are scheduled by quarter or semester with point-five credit per quarter or a one-full credit per semester. So again, by the end of the semester, as far as the minutes are concerned, the class time is concerned, the amount of instruction and material that teachers should be able to get through should be should be pretty comparable. The good of this is it's fewer classes for students and for teachers to manage. And it's more time to engage with with the material and really kind of deeply engage with the material on a daily basis. The bad is is there's a loss of continuity there, and that's the real drawback is that if there are some classes that might be good to take over a year period of time, math would be one, for instance, languages are one that would be good for that continuity over a longer period of time. You do lose that continuity, and unfortunately, when it comes to the situation that we are in, there is no perfect response to where we are at. We are, we are trying to do the best we can to make sure that things are manageable for our students and for our teachers. And we all wish that we could be in a brick-and-mortar school and be back in here live in person every single day with our students. We believe that is what's best, but unfortunately, that's a situation that that we simply don't don't have an option for at this point right now. So we're doing doing the best we can, what we feel is best for our students and and teachers, parents, as far as being able to keep a manageable schedule and manageable content and manageable number of classes. And so, you know, we we see a lot of advantages in this particular situation for the block schedule at this point right now. And so know that those questions are coming up. We appreciate those questions. But but just to see the comparison of side-by-side between the traditional seven periods and the block schedule as far as the content is concerned, the minutes are concerned, it should be pretty comparable doing the block schedule. The updated draft schedule for us. We we got some feedback last week when we were discussing the possibility of of live synchronous meetings for each of our classes only once a week. Teachers didn't necessarily feel like that was was enough. We got a lot of parents that that got in touch with us, let us know that they would like more opportunities for live synchronous meetings. So we went back to the drawing board and and did a little bit more research and was able to come up with a schedule that I know that the the middle school is actually looking at a very similar schedule, so there's going to be a lot of continuity there as well. But this would be a sample schedule of what a week would look like for a student. You can see here that it's an example for cohort A, schedule quarters, one and two, cohort B would really just kind of flip the the Tuesday and Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So the live teacher facilitated learning would be for schedule B would be on Wednesdays and Fridays. For schedule A, it'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. These will be opportunities and and knows also that there's no, there's no times attached to these at this point right now. We will make sure that there are times attached to these before this full final schedule goes out. One of the other things that we heard was the possibility that you know, if we were going to be doing our last period of the day in a hybrid schedule online, and that class started at one o'clock, it may not be enough time for students to get home if they're taking a bus. And so we've rearranged some things where that class would actually start a little bit later. Teacher prep time and office hours might be a little bit earlier. And then the the seventh-period class would actually start at about one forty and end at about three-ten. So we we are trying to be responsive to things that are coming up that maybe we didn't see the first time. People are getting in touch with us, letting us know that, you know, it might look a little different if if we can get students home on time to begin that course. So some differences. Johnny, I saw you just pop up here. Is there something you want to add to that, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that this draft schedule is really for while we are in our comprehensive distance learning model and not allowed to go back into in-person instruction. So this would be unique to when students are are working solely from home. And the, we will make adjustments to the hybrid schedule to reflect that that time it takes students to travel by bus or to walk home. We want to be empathetic to that as well. And so just know that there's kind of two different schedules we're talking about.
And and actually, I'm gonna, there's, there's almost three different schedules, right? There's the, there's the online school, the online schedule. There's the hybrid schedule, and then there's the online schedule that will apply to the hybrid students while we are in distance learning. That is what this schedule reflects right here, is the online schedule for hybrid students while we are in distance learning. So again, we'll send this out. If you don't have an opportunity to take a close look at it right now, we'll make sure that we send this out. So everybody has an opportunity to take a closer look at it. Again, this is the thinking as as far as where we're at at this point right now. We we hope that that will land on something similar to this right here. So there are conversations that still need to take place before we actually come to a full landing point, but this is where the thinking is at at this point right now. A lot of questions came in about social emotional curriculum or social emotional learning, what that looks like, what actually is social emotional learning. We typically do our social emotional curriculum in our AG or advisory groups. The purpose is self-regulation skills, social belonging connections, exploring interests and developing a post-high school plan. It is also to create connections with students, to find a place of belonging with our students. And our students will typically stay in their in their AGs for all four years. And so they have an opportunity to create deep connections with their students during that time. We intend to continue this program through through whatever closure time we have at this point right now. The curriculum piece of this, which there's an, I didn't say it, but there's an academic and social emotional component to our our AG curriculum. And these are reflective of of state requirements for the state of Oregon that require an education plan and profile, career-related learning standards and experiences, extended applications. Edgenuity offers courses that are cover comparable material to our advisory group or SEL curriculum pieces. And so each of our classes is going to be assigned one of those edgenuity courses that reflect that curriculum. But then they will continue meeting with their AGs for that that social support, the the connectedness piece. Though the course, the curriculum work will be done at the end of first semester, we are putting together a schedule for second semester that's going to continue having our AGs meet together at least once a week, if not twice a week, or maybe even more, to maintain that social connection and that connectedness to one another, to the school, experiences, these sorts of things. So that's an important part of where we are at right now, is making sure that our students stay connected to us, to the school, to each other, and we understand that, we get that. The curriculum piece, like I said, our students should be through that after the end of first semester. The social piece and continuing to check in, continuing to check on well-being, continuing to check in on classes, making sure our students are making progress, that will continue on through the entire year, though there will not be an academic component to that part of it. So I I hope that makes a little bit more sense. That was a question. And that was, that was about three or four or five questions that came in relative to that curriculum. Hopefully that that answered those questions. Mr. Rise, we are on our activities and athletic updates. This is also going to be expanded, so I'm gonna have Mr. Rise kind of share some some updates relative to activities and athletics, and then we're going to expand on on some of the implications that he's going to bring up here. So, Mr. Rise, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you to all of our folks being on here tonight. As Wade shared, we learn new information, if not weekly, almost daily. So we're trying to keep you guys as updated as we can. So the two items that I'm going to speak specifically to are our plan as a school district and as a conference as far as practices and workouts for this first portion of the year where we're in comprehensive distance learning. The second point that I'm going to talk about is specific to our Fox online folks. So first of all, with our our workout plan and practice plan. The conference ADs met multiple times last week, and although it's not confirmed, I would say that we are leaning towards as a conference to go ahead with allowing workouts to proceed pretty much with the way they are going right now. What that means is we would continue to allow our teams at the discretion of each coach or program to allow workouts to continue under the guidelines that we are currently with and performing on. So that would be our indoor sports could be in groups of ten or less. Our outside groups could be a little bit larger than that, but there would still be no contact. And at this point, we are planning for no competitions while we are in our CDL plan. So to expand on that a little bit, last week, there was a release from the governor's office that basically left it up to schools and districts as to how they wanted to proceed with workouts during distance plans. And it also expressed the importance of giving our kids as many opportunities to connect and engage with our schools as possible. So with that being said, our athletic directors as a league kind of use that to guide our our plans. So again, although it's not confirmed, the plan at this time would be to continue to allow teams to work out throughout the fall under the current guidance that we have been. I'm sure that that will create some some questions specifically. But the other piece that I want to, that I want to touch base on.
Mr. Rise, can I, can I expand on that just a little bit real quickly? Because I think one of one of the questions that might come up relative to that is is you know, how can we justify putting students on the field or on the courts or or all of that? And we can't justify bringing them into a classroom and taking English class or do those sorts of things. And and unfortunately, that's, I don't, I guess not unfortunately, that is the guidance that is that is existing right now with ODE and with OSAA. We are simply not allowed to bring students into the building at this point right now. We are allowed to have students get together in their in their workouts with their teams, those sorts of things, because we feel like that's an important aspect of students' lives. You know, at this point right now, we are going to follow that guidance and allow our students to do that, you know, under under Mr. Rise's guidance there. So I I just want to be able to answer that. It's just at this point right now, we we are allowed to do certain things, not allowed to do others. That's one of the ones we are allowed to do, and if we're allowed to do it, we think that's healthy for our students. So.
And then I'm going to go ahead and jump onto that question that just popped up. Although I did speak specifically to sports and athletics, this would go the same for our activities. If our activities can meet and proceed under the current guidance, we will definitely allow that to happen. For example, speech and debate. Whether they want to meet outside, whether they want to meet virtually, if our clubs can achieve the same guidelines that our athletics do, we will absolutely support that.
I'd like to follow up with that real quick, too. And I spoke with Heather Basher, activities director, who works closely with our our non-OSA sanctioned clubs. And and we've been brainstorming some ideas to even even run some of those club meetings virtually and and how to support those. We believe strongly that students who are connected to to athletics and activities, regardless of those associations being relative to OSAA, are a strong indicator of student success in high school. And we'll do everything we can to keep your students connected.
And I think, Mr. Rise, do you have some follow-up as far as eligibilities and such as well, right?
Right. So as far as our our Fox online goes, and and again, this is information that was shared with us as late as yesterday afternoon. We we were given some unfortunate news that our Fox online program will actually be its own school and have its own school ID. What that means is for our athletes that currently live outside of the Silverton School District boundaries, you need to be enrolled in our hybrid program if you want to compete for Silverton High School this year. If you enroll in our Fox online, which again, we were given information from ODE yesterday, that it will be its own school, then you would refer back to your host school as an associate member. And so again, just to be clear, if you are an athlete that is living outside of the Silverton School District boundary to compete in athletics, you need to be enrolled in our hybrid program.
Or activities. Or, or so if you're in band, if you're in band, choir, speech and debate, anything that competes in an OSAA activity, that this rule will apply.
And I just kind of want to let that sink in for just a minute. For those folks that want to be involved in activities and athletics at Silverton High School, if you are in our boundary, you're fine. There's no concern, because we are your host school. If you live outside of the Silverton High School boundary or the Silverton School District boundary, you need to be enrolled in the hybrid program to compete for Silverton High School. Mr. Lockett, do you want to expand on that as far as?
Well, I will, I, because I think there's, there's other implications that exist there as well. And it's not just athletics or activities and and being able to to participate for Silverton High School in that capacity. Because our online school, again, just learning this recently, because our online school is going to have its own ID, be its own school. And again, we just got this from from ODE yesterday. That means if you are already a transfer student into the Silver Falls School District and you want to be a part of the online school, you will be transferring again. You're transferring to another school, which means you would have to reapply to transfer to Silverton's, the the Fox online, if you are already a transfer student. If you are a Silverton High School student and you want to be a part of Fox online, there's no transfer involved there. Again, you are one of our students. You are within the Silver Falls boundary. You are a Silver Falls School District student, so there's no need to transfer as far as that's concerned. But if you are an inter-district transfer student from, say, Salem Kaiser, and you want to enroll in the online school, you will have to reapply to transfer. There's a risk to that, because Salem Kaiser offers the same program, the same online program, and they may not accept that, they may not allow you to transfer out if you are transferring to be in a program that they already offer. So so I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as well that that there are transfer implications as far as all of that is concerned as well. And I think that might end up stirring up some questions at some point, if not immediately, and right now, I I think once once that marinates a little bit and people have an opportunity for that to sink in, it may create some questions. If you are in that position and you have questions, please reach out to us. And we'll do the best to have personal conversations with everyone that has any questions relative to that. We'll try and walk you through the process and and do the best we can to give you the best advice that 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 we can give you based on the information that we have. So.
And Mr. Lockett, just to expand on that, for for our athletes and those that are involved in activities, I plan to start making personal phone calls tomorrow to families that have previously enrolled in our online program.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I think that's going to bring us into the questions that that we didn't necessarily get to at this point right now. Mrs. Pharoah actually sent me a text not too long ago wanting me to to remind folks that that when you come in for registration, and and there are four stations, one of those stations is a is a photo. It's a school, school picture. We just want people to be aware that it it could back up a little bit at that point. If it does, please don't get out of your cars until it's time. We've had conversations with with our photographers, letting them know that we're trying to work our way through this as quickly as possible. We're going to try and be as efficient as we can. Times are actually going to dictate how that backup looks. There's going to be certain times of the day where where more people are going to show up than others. Please be patient with us and and just know that that's in all likelihood going to happen at some point. So just want you to be aware of that. Jumping into the questions now. This is this first question, more of a statement, but it's really talking about, you know, the office hours between one and two-twenty and having time for students to get home. you know, the office hours between 1:00 and 2:20, and having time for students to get home and, and be available for an afternoon class. Maybe not even have an opportunity for students to, that might need some help to be able to get online and access their teachers. So in our schedule, we're going to be kind of moving that around so that teacher prep time and lunch and all of that is taken care of up till about 1:30, 1:40, and then have office hours in that final period begin at 1:40, giving students an opportunity to access their teachers for that entire last part of the day, 1:40, 1:45 till 3:10, 3:15, somewhere in there. So we, we've heard that, we appreciate that feedback. We're going to, we're going to do the best we can to make adjustments that work for everybody, and that was, that's, that's the right move. What about language learning? This model doesn't seem ideal. How is retention and long-term learning addressed and compressing a year of instruction to a semester? Again, nothing is ideal here. We are, we are trying to, we're trying to do the best we can in a, in a crisis situation and be responsive to student workloads, management of class loads, teacher management of class loads. And again, understand this isn't the ideal model, isn't an ideal situation, and that just happens to be the, the nature of, of a pandemic and a crisis situation. We believe that our teachers are, are professionals, are very good at what they do, and, and give, will give our students the best possible experience they can get in, in a, in a less than ideal situation. But we are confident that will be the case. What are the plans for kids that are in the high school basic skills classroom? So this, this is an interesting situation. You know, when it comes to, there, there is some guidance that exists that gives us some latitude to bring certain groups of students in to be able to give them extra assistance. That actually goes for any student that we learn is not being successful in an online or, or any kind of hybrid model. That will, that will exist for any one of those students. When it comes to students that are on IEPs or 504s, what we have to keep in mind at this point right now is the comprehensive distance learning and the hybrid model is our general education model at this point right now. And there has to be some sort of documentation that those students can't be successful in that model before we can bring them in to give them the modification of being in, in person. We are still exploring that for basic skills students. We're, we're exploring that for really every one of our students to make sure that we can, make sure they're all successful. But, but that is where it is at at this point right now. And actually, that's a question that I specifically sent to our Director of Special Services yesterday, or the day before yesterday. And that was, that was the response that we got. The idea will not be a blanket yes for all basic skills students or SLP students, but we're going to have to evaluate those on a, on a case-by-case basis, so. So that's, that's where we are with that. Any thoughts to engaging students in safe socializing events that resonate with traditional events, assemblies, homecomings? Mrs. Pharaoh, do you want to take that? You had the conversation with Mrs. Basher. I know that last spring we did some things that resembled that. We just had a conversation today in a district admin meeting relative to, you know, some welcome back days and these sorts of things. But, but Johnny, you might be able to expand on that a little bit better.
I don't know that I have a lot to add from what I've already said, other than that we are looking at, at trying to engage kids differently than we ever have before. And, and that that might look like, there's going to be some virtual breakout rooms for students who maybe were in the fly fishing club, or students who have a special interest in gaming. But that's not normally the type of events that we would be hosting, but we recognize that kids are going to be at home sometimes alone and, and without a lot of social interaction. And so we're just going to try and be as creative as we can in terms of what the metrics allow us to do.
Thank you. When registering students, will we need to pay sports fees since they are postponed? The short, simple answer to that is no. There will be no fees or payments taken at registration. If you have student P fees to pay from last year, we would recommend that you pay those online. There's a link on our website to do that, or turn in a check with your paperwork at registration. If you're paying by check, a receipt can be either mailed or emailed to you. But as far as registration for this year is concerned, we're not going to be taking any fees this year. Johnny, it looked like you were about to say something.
Oh, I was just ready for the Q and As when you're ready for them.
Okay, in just a moment. Will yearbooks still happen? Do we pay for them at registration? We are planning on trying to put a yearbook together. You will not pay for them at registration. But the, the whole purpose for getting pictures taken at registration is, is that we do plan to get that, you know, what, what the, what the yearbook might look like, we simply can't answer that at this point right now. We're going to lean on our local expert, Abby Shetler, to come up with a plan and put that together. And I promise you, when we, when we task her with that, everything she does is outstanding. And so I would look forward to something amazing if, if that's, if we don't have a, a traditional yearbook. Or even if we are in distance learning for the majority of the year, she'll come up with something creative and it's going to be awesome. So, so the answer is yes, we do, we do plan to have a yearbook. But no, we do not expect you to pay for them at registration this year. How will Silverton High School students who choose Fox online know which courses they should be choosing? Or will this happen through them, for them through the registration process like normal? I think this is a really appropriate question for you, Mrs. Pharaoh.
Yeah. So as I mentioned last week, and if you weren't here, our Fox online schedule that we will be able to provide students will be dramatically different than the schedule that we're able to provide students in the Fox hybrid. The number one reason for that is the staffing that we, based on the number of students who have selected Fox online, have allocated four staff members to that, that are highly, highly qualified in the, the core content areas. They can only teach so much within their day, whereas I have 65 teachers in Fox hybrid. So they can offer a lot of different opportunities for students. What, what we are going to do is to try and front-load student schedules with required courses so that when we're back in live instruction, hopefully sooner than later, but even as late as next year, and we will be able to give the students who participated in Fox online extra opportunities to take elective courses when we think that they're the most enriching anyways. We know those classes are best when experiential learning is happening. And, and so that's the trade-off, is that you don't get as many elective options. Our goal is to have those schedules at registration, but I can't guarantee it at this point. If we don't have Fox online schedules for students by registration, those will be mailed out shortly after. But our counselors are working around the clock right now to build all of our, our student schedules and have as many ready as possible by next week.
Drew, I saw something that might have indicated a hand going up. If there's a follow-up to that question, we'd be happy to take that right now.
Yeah, enabling Eliza now. Go ahead, Eliza, turn on your microphone and go for it.
I apologize, that was accidental.
Well, I'm glad you're here. Thank you for, for tuning in, and I hope you're getting some good information, Eliza.
I sur-, I, I, I am, thank you very much.
Good, it's nice to hear your voice. Okay, are live class meetings going to stay on a consistent time schedule, or are teachers going to be able to set their own class times? There's going to be a very specific schedule. And the live class meetings, though they are not going to be required for students to tune in, again, we're trying to keep as flexible a schedule as possible with the understanding that not every single student in a distance learning model is going to be able to attend classes on those class schedules. However, the teachers will maintain a very consistent time schedule, and they will record all of their, all of their live synchronous meetings. And so students that aren't able to be at those meetings will be able to come back and view those at, at a later time, contribute to question and answer or chat boards, discussion boards, those sorts of things. So there will be consistent time schedules, but the learning opportunities will be flexible for the students as far as the timing is concerned. I hope that answered that question. May seniors receive work experience plus credit coupled with early release? The, the simple answer to that is, is yes, but Johnny, I'll let you expand on it.
Yeah, cooperative work experience has been a program that we have used extensively for as long as I've worked at Silverton High School. And I, even when I was a, a student at a different high school, took advantage of that opportunity. We will continue to make that an option for students. It's not exclusive to seniors either. If a junior has a, a work opportunity and they want to take an early release and it works in their graduation plan, they will have the opportunity to do that. They just need to work with their counselors. Many students already forecasted for work experience, so they will have that on their schedules. If they didn't forecast for that and they have a new opportunity as a result of this unique school year, we are happy to work with them to the best of our ability and, and just encourage you to reach out to your student's counselor.
And I think that kind of piggies on, piggybacks on with the next question, is there any ways seniors can finish early? I think there's going to be some scheduling implications and those sorts of things, but yeah, Johnny, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a little more complicated than it's been in the past, because not all of our classes are going to be offered at the same time. And so if your student, for example, needs a, and, and this is just a hypothetical, needs to take English 4, and English 4 doesn't fit in their schedule first semester, that's going to make it more challenging, or the first two quarters, make it more challenging for them to graduate early. Again, this, in order for a student to, to finish early, we, we have a early graduation proposal process. And what that does is it starts with the counselor, and they talk about possible grad plans and what that looks like, and then it's a final proposal actually sent to me. And, and then I determine if that student is eligible for early graduation or not. It's not as easy to answer right now. And, and we're going to be able to give those seniors who are trying to graduate early better advice as to which program they should be on based on their student schedules, once those become available after registration. So when you get your student schedule, or if you're thinking about that now, get, get in contact with Mr. Ortega. He can start that process. Know that he's very, very busy trying to finish student schedules. So next week's probably going to be the best time to get some valuable responses.
So that kind of gets us through the, the first set of questions that we've got. I'm going to run into now the, the questions that are coming up. Online, can tag students do a combination of online and hybrid if the high school is not making it possible to take all AP and college this fall? I think, Johnny?
Yeah, so with the, again, that, that question becomes more complicated as the guidance from ODE has indicated that now our online program is a separate school. So no, students cannot be dual-enrolled in two different schools. And our, that's not going to work in their schedule. We can help you though, find access if there are classes that you are not able to take. All of our courses will be offered at some point throughout the year, just not all in the fall. But if there's a class that a senior couldn't get in their schedule, you know, they requested four AP classes and they only have room for three, and they need that in order to move on to their next steps. Again, that's a conversation that you need to have with Mr. Ortega, so we can advise you on how to complete your educational plan.
And it looks like these, it looks like a lot of these, Johnny, are specific.
Yeah, there are a lot for me, yeah.
Well, it looks like a lot of them are specific to curriculum. So I'll ask the next one, I'll let you move on it. CTE welding, will the advanced class be allowed to continue to get their college credit? I read something about ODE guidance on this. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, again, we're going to do our best to try and bring in small groups when the opportunity presents itself. Mr. Towery's done a tremendous amount of professional development, preparing for welding certification opportunities for our students. That requires a demonstration of skills by those students. What I can say is that the earliest opportunity the district has indicated that we may be able to start bringing in small groups is October 5th. And that likely isn't going to start with our CTE classes. That'll probably start with our basic skills, our English language learners, some of those. And then as, as we get some of those programs established, we'll try and start bringing in small groups for CTE opportunities as the metrics allow us. Health occupations, so what will specifically happen with health occupations? We will be running medical terminology in the first two quarters and the health electives courses in the third and fourth quarters, hoping that, that there may be an opportunity for students to get some of their rotation opportunities. But as you can imagine, our healthcare facilities are not allowing extra people into those right now. And so the virus will really dictate on what type of experiential learning opportunities those students will have. But Mrs. Sheets is preparing again to do everything she can to keep that, the integrity of that program.
Can you change your schedule at registration if needed?
That's a great question. The answer is no. Counselors will not be available during registration as they have been in that past. There will be a process where students can submit schedule change requests to, specific to their counselor through a Google form. If you don't have internet, we will send home that information in a, a paper version for students to be able to access those or make an appointment with their counselor. The schedule changes will be very limited though, because we are also trying to manage cohort sizes. And so we're, we're doing everything we can to build schedules based off of students forecasting. If you come to your counselor and say, I registered for these, but I don't think this course load is manageable in this online learning opportunity, we're going to do everything we can to try and help support your student. But, but please be aware that many schedule changes might not be at all possible because of our cohort requirements.
Next question, if we already signed up for Fox online, but realized that due to transfer issues, need to change to Fox hybrid, how do we do that? I, I would suggest getting in touch with us. You know, send, send us an email and let us, let us help you work through that. We, we can, we can work with you, we can work with you on that.
Yeah, they can email their counselors or me, or Heidi Everly, anyone in the counseling office will be able to help adjust those schedules for you. Or you could also email Mr. Rice and he'll communicate those to us as well.
The next question, if we transfer into the district, do we need to sign up for hybrid only? So if, if you are not already a transfer into the district, and you are looking to transfer into the district, then I think your, your best opportunity to get released from your home district would be to sign up for the hybrid only, because most districts, several districts are offering an online option, and if they're already offering that option, they, they may not release a, a student to come to another school. So I'm not saying you necessarily need to sign up for the hybrid option, but I do believe that the best opportunity for you to be released from another district would be to go that route. So I, I, I hope that makes sense. The next question, I, I'm going to ask if you can kind of expand on this. I have a question about a tag student and wasn't offered an option this year. I, I'm just not quite sure what the question is there, so if you want to expand on that, that would, that would help us. During comprehensive distance learning, why aren't students getting live instruction four days a week as in many other districts? So we're having to kind of reimagine or rethink what teaching and learning looks like through this process right here. Students are going to be getting continuous instruction for, or even five days a week, really. They're just going to be in front of a live synchronous instructor for two days a week. During those two days a week, they're going to be getting not just live instruction, but there's going to be activities, there's going to be extensions, there's going to be discussion boards, there's going to be breakout rooms where students are going to have opportunities to have discussions with one another. And then teachers are also going to be pushing out other learning opportunities for students on days that they are not live in front of a teacher. They will then be able to follow up with those things on, on the next day that they are live in front of a teacher. So it's, it's, it's really equivalent to 85. So it's, it's, it's really equivalent to 85 minutes a day, whether there's a teacher in front of us on that day or not a teacher in front of us on that day. But, but we're really having to kind of shift our whole thinking on what teaching and learning looks like through this process. Will seniors and juniors still receive priority for classes they specifically need toward graduation requirements? Mrs. Farrell, you're building the schedule, so.
Absolutely. Making sure that students are on track to graduate is our number one priority. So that is, I would say our junior and senior counselors are working a little bit more slowly through the schedule building process than the freshman and sophomore counselors, just because they are double and triple checking what your student needs to graduate and trying to make sure that they're getting them in the right courses to be on track.
Nice. Why not extend SEL to second, to semester two? Similarly, why won't AGs meet daily in semester two if we are still in comprehensive distance learning? And I think those are good questions. And I, again, the AG curriculum, the curriculum piece of that should be done by the end of first semester. They will continue to meet and we haven't necessarily come up with a specific schedule for second semester on how often they will meet. If you feel like daily is, is good, I think that's good feedback. We appreciate that. We're still building what that schedule might look like to make sure that students are continuing to be connected, students are continuing to see their AG teachers, students are continuing to get their questions answered. And so those connections, we know are a big deal. We know that they help students kind of get through their year, move through their year, have, have their person to be there for them and have their advocate to be there for them. So we don't know exactly what that will look like on a daily basis at this point, whether it's twice a week, whether it's four times a week, whether it's five times a week. But, but I think that's good feedback. Johnny, you looked like you were about to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on that, that the reason it's not offered as an additional class in the second semester is that students have really specific classes that they need to take to either graduate or for entrance requirements to their prospective universities or trade schools or post-secondary options. And so it just didn't fit in the schedule to offer it all year as a standalone class. Again, does that mean that those connections stop? Absolutely not. Just like Monsieur Lockett just said, it just means the coursework will be done and then they can focus on the classes that they need to finish and move on to their next steps.
Next question, how can AP students possibly get enough direct instruction in just two live instruction periods per week? I'll answer this quickly and then Johnny, I'll let you kind of expand on it. Again, I, I think this is, this is about kind of reimagining teaching and learning and what that looks like. And, and you know, I think when it comes to especially AP students and those college level students, this is going to be really reflective of what a class would look like at the next level. Certainly at a lot of schools in Oregon at this point that aren't going to be meeting live and in person, they're going to be doing something very similar. And I would say in, in college courses or graduate courses that I'm taking, that I know Mrs. Farrell is taking right now as well. You know, there are some of them where we don't have any live synchronous teaching whatsoever, that everything is done through discussion boards, through reading, through different activities. So it is possible to get through that material. It will definitely take some good relationships between teachers and students. It will take a lot of conversations between teachers and students. It will, it will require us to pay a lot of attention to students progressing, what they need to be successful, and we're willing to put whatever resources we need into making them successful through those processes. So Johnny, do you want to expand on that at all?
I would just follow up that many students who take AP courses never take them live. Really rural, small schools that don't have the FTE or the budgets to offer AP courses, their students often take this entirely online through partner organizations and schools. And so there's certainly a model for AP courses to be done successfully online. And, and that's why we believe that the edgenuity courses will help that. And then the expertise of our teachers in preparing students. Because we've always done it one way, doesn't mean that that's the only way that AP is delivered.
The last question that I've got at this point right now is a follow up to the tag question. Wanted to know why my student can't take all his AP choices due to the master schedule. And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's only one AP course that's not offered through edgenuity. Is that correct?
There is only one that's not offered through edgenuity that we offer, and that's AP physics. But we're still running AP physics. The problem becomes that we have to run all of our AP classes in the first two quarters. And so if your student has a conflict in the master schedule, and this happens sometimes for kids, even when we have a seven period day, sometimes they just have to make choices about which of those AP courses are the best for them. And, and they don't get to take all of them. So oftentimes, students who are enrolled in health occupations have to make some really tough decisions about what other classes they get to take or else they can't take health. And unfortunately, and, and I think I don't even know that it's unfortunate. I think that's a fact of life and a good opportunity for students to prepare and that we have to make choices sometimes. And while we try and do everything we can to build the schedule that reflects what they forecasted for, sometimes it's impossible. And that is not unique to this schedule. It's just, it's, it's more glaring when you only have three periods.
Will grading be normal and the use of Wozzle to monitor assignments? Be able to, will we be able to do that as normal? And I think the real simple, short answer to that is yes. You'll be able to monitor your students' grades through Wozzle, the assignments through Wozzle. And so I, you know, teachers should be able to, edgenuity and Canvas communicates with our grading, our LBL, our system, our information system. And so it should be, it should be relatively easy to be able to monitor that stuff through Wozzle. That looks like the last question we've got right now. So unless there's any more that pop up, I'll give it a little bit more time. We are down to about five minutes at this point. So if that is the last question that comes up, you know, we can all get out of here about five minutes early. But I do want to say thank you to everybody for coming in, listening. Please keep bringing those questions up. The more questions, the more information and feedback that we get, the easier it is for us to make little adjustments here and there that are going to work for our students, that are going to work for our families, that are going to work for our teachers. So please know how much we appreciate your engagement here, your feedback and, and continuing to give us questions and give us things to think about through this process right now. It's a brand new process. It's new to all of us. We are going to continue doing the best we can. Our teachers are going to do the best they can to give our students an outstanding opportunity. And the truth is, I believe that with our staff, with our teachers, with our support staff, we're going to give us as, as good a learning opportunity as students are going to get in the valley. So if not in the state of Oregon. So thank you all very much for being here. Again, please continue engaging with us. And if you have questions, feel free to email. We'll send this out soon. And oh, there's one more question that just popped up. Will there be guidance to parents for how involved we need to be during the learning day? Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to have to be, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily need parents looking over shoulders of students at all times. But, but we are hoping that parents stay engaged with their students, keep up with their progress. And if there are questions that, that you have or not seeing the progress that maybe you think your student should be making, please feel free to reach out to teachers. You can, you can be as involved as you would like to be, but we always like for parents to be involved and ask questions and be there for their students and so there's not going to be a specific point by point, parents need to do this and parents need to do that. So it's just stay as involved as you need to be to make sure your student is making progress. And if you've got questions about that, feel free to give us a call or an email and we'd be happy to have that conversation with you.
If I could piggyback on that, I would say just as a general thing to be preparing for as a learning coach at home is that you be really engaging with your kids about their progress and making sure that those kids are getting the, the weekly modules or assignments done and participating. Missing a couple of weeks of class could really be detrimental to your students' grades. And so I think that would be my best advice to you is just be prepared to not just say, did you get it done? But to really verify that they did get it done and they understood it and they're seeking out their teachers when they need help.
And missing, missing a day during this model is not like missing a day in a traditional seven period model. You're missing a lot of instruction if you miss a day. So it's going to be important to stay up on that. There is one more comment that came up and, and I appreciate the comment coming up. It's a great, it's a great suggestion. So thank you. We appreciate this. Again, appreciate all the feedback. Thank you all for being here. If there are follow up questions, please feel free to send them our way. And again, we will be sending this, the recording, we'll put it on YouTube and get a link sent out as well as sending the PowerPoint presentation out to everybody just so you have, have a record of it and need to reference it if there. Thank you all so much. Have a great evening.